...
Here.
Mayor Quinn, here. Deputy Mayor Emerson, here. Mayor Campbell, here.
Are you recording?
Good evening. We've got a couple of special events on the agenda today. Two returning events, first one is the Skate and Surf Festival. The Applecave Skate and Surf Festival LLC has submitted an application to return next year approximately the same dates, same physical layout. So what we are asking tonight is to approve the dates for them and authorize the city attorney to contractually put that together again.
No problem.
Special events.
I have a couple of questions, or are you finished?
Excuse me?
Are you finished?
With that event?
Yes.
Almost. I was going to say that the special events committee reviewed the event and all the things that happened during that event, and we were all okay with that.
If part of the street is closed, and what about the lighting, because they mentioned up until 10:00 p.m.?
I can't answer the lighting question, to tell you the truth. The streets that were closed was Ocean Avenue, past Sunset until Sixth. Sunset Avenue was also closed between Ocean and Kingsley. And that was it.
And the lighting, I mean, 10 o'clock, isn't it going to be dark by then?
It should be pretty dark, but I don't remember whether they had any lighting there, to tell you the truth. I'll check on that, though.
Thank you.
So you would be approving the special events application this evening, just reserving the dates. As you recall, in the past, we had a formal contractual arrangement with Skate and Surf Festival LLC. We had a written agreement that had been negotiated and approved whereby they agreed to cover costs associated with city services, including police, fire, EMS, and DPW. We'll put together the same agreement and bring it back to you. At that point in time, when the agreement is approved, the special events application itself will be submitted to you for your approval. But right now, you'll just be reserving the dates.
Okay. The next one is the volleyball tournament. They've already submitted their application for the tournament. They're asking to extend the weekend by one day and rent the Eighth Avenue beach to have a dodgeball tournament and a kickball tournament on that. And they would pay all the associated fees associated with doing that on the beach. I think this is the fourth or fifth year of the volleyball tournament.
So you had this.
Yep. New events. The lifeguards are putting together the United States Lifesaving Association Mid-Atlantic Region Junior Lifeguard Tournament for July 21st. It will be an event that takes place pretty much all day long, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. between First Avenue and Second Avenue Beach. Joe Bon Giovanni is part of this, set up for this.
How would you feel about that?
I know, that's my question inside.
And there's a lot of good information that we usually get on the back, like number and if they're going to charge, if they're going to close any street.
Yep. So my applications have the backs on them, but yours...
Ours.
Maybe when they were copied, they didn't...
Somebody must have known how they had it.
No, I had the same question.
Well, I think that's yours truly fault. Issue is away, so I'm going to take responsibility for that. Sorry. If you do have any questions about that, though, let me know, because I have the copy.
They're not closing any streets.
No.
Do they need our services, our police?
They probably will utilize some of our lifeguards. Yeah, possibly.
That's the city's sponsor for that?
Yes, that's correct. The next one is a concert at Paramount Theater. They're actually just requesting a city date for that.
Again, we don't have the back.
Yep.
I have some information.
They're expecting 500 to 700 people to come to this event. No alcohol. And no street closings.
Do they need our police or any...
Probably not, since there's no alcohol.
And if they do, it's not the city's sponsor for that, they're not to have...
Yep. That's correct. Any questions with that?
In the applications, is it sponsored? The only thing they want is our free money?
Yes, that, yeah, that's absolutely. They would contract with Madison Marquette for the theater, but they would be able to get the discounted rate, the city rate.
On September 13th?
September 13th, yep.
I don't really follow any...
Okay. And then the last two are two weddings, which we vetted already, they're okay. Thank you.
Also on the agenda, we have Joe Kuno, who is making a presentation regarding public works and making comments about the bump outs that are requested by iStar and works on rebuilding the area.
Okay, good evening, council. I guess I'm going to go ahead and do the first presentation on the various departments in the city and some of our functions, so that everyone can know per ordinance. The Department of Engineering and Public Works is governed under the city ordinance, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 5 Departments and Subdivisions. It is located under subsection 2-11. And the total crux of what we do is we are generally responsible for all things that are infrastructure related. That is the most general statement I can make about what we do. Getting into the specifics of it, I am the director of the department, Robert is the assistant director. Beneath us, we have three major subdivisions, which is engineering, public works, and sewer utility. Part of our organizational chart does not include additional tasks, all infrastructure related, that we perform for the parking utility, mainly having to do with numbering, repairing, relocating meters, installing, things of that nature, as well as the beach utility with certain aspects of the maintenance, the fleet service, and waste, solid waste management, things of that nature. So the new Department of Public Works, if you will, was established sometime in 2009, oh, I'm sorry, 2010, where essentially combined Department of Public Works and engineering, which were two separate departments at the time. The city engineer sits as the director of the combined department. It's an appointment by the city manager position. Qualifications, engineer must be licensed professional in the state of New Jersey, have at least 10 years full-time experience in the field of engineering, five years of full-time experience municipal construction and maintenance projects, be a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey, and be a certified public works manager in the state of New Jersey. City manager may waive any of those requirements. I do meet all of those.
Let's get into it.
Yeah, the actual department, okay. So, okay. The internal organization of the department consists of the Bureau of Buildings and Grounds, Bureau of Traffic, Signs and Striping, the Bureau of Roads and Sewers, the Bureau of Fleet Operations, and the Bureau of Parks. For the most part, as far as our labor staff and who works where, everyone works entertainably amongst the majority of those bureaus. We call them divisions now, but... So I'll go into engineering. Engineering consists of myself and Robert on certain tasks, mostly field-related, construction administration of any kind of private development and any kind of capital or grant-funded project put forth by the city. Robert is basically in charge of that on my behalf. He reports to me what he sees in the field, and I make the executive decisions on the actual changes. As we all know, construction can change within minutes, every hour on the hour, every day. So when we have projects going on out there, we are pretty much immersed in that. Other things that the city engineer takes care of, I liaise with various departments. I liaise with the planning, zoning, construction department, code enforcement at times, and also police, basically every other department on various different levels. I prepare grant applications. I also prepare any kind of permitting, be it environmental for our underground storage tanks, anything having to do with any kind of environmental remediation on any private or public site. I do all the reporting for the sewer plant to keep our general discharge permit, which is the lifeblood of the plant. It allows us the ability to discharge our clean water into the ocean. If we can't do that, we are dead in the water, literally. I plan all capital improvements, be it repair, brand new construction of sewers, sidewalks, anything in the right of way, sidewalks, streetscapes, lighting, things of that nature, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, pavement, sidewalks and curbs. Along with planning comes the actual either design in-house or preparation of RFPs to get professionals to assist with that work and see that work through. There are occasions where I will do all of that in-house, and I'll get into some of the projects where we've done that. But on most occasions, the way the organization is set up is mostly for oversight of those types of things. I would like to get into more of the actual design, and with that comes affording more time to put towards that. The smallest project, I might say, in the last two years that I put together was perhaps the community facility, community affairs facility improvements. That alone took 50 hours to put together, plans and specs, see-through the bidding, put forth the award, and handed over to Robert to manage the actual construction. 50 hours in the environment that we're in is very difficult to come by, to string the other 50 hours. And as one might imagine, if you started on the project today, you would like to continue until you get that done, but that is simply not the case. So I'll get into that a little bit more about the projects. That's essentially engineering, anything permitting related at all, and construction management of all of those capital improvements. And let's not also forget grant, grant closeout, grant reimbursement. Most of our grants are reimbursement basis, where we have to put forth the money, spend it, and then show all the proof of how we spent it and how we met the grant objectives before we can actually get our money back. So I do all of that as well. Hurricane Sandy. Majority of the legwork on documentation came directly from my desk with tremendous amount of help from Robert. I had a technical assistant that I was able to bring in at no cost to the city through a county grant. She was fully funded for the period of the prior year. It was exactly a year. And most of the legwork in getting the approval on the seven project worksheets totaling $7 million for Sandy recovery was all generated from my department. I now have the luxury of a very good helper named Tracy Lizardi, the municipal treasurer, who is now seeing through the financial end and getting the reimbursement. Moving right along into the DPW, the public works, which is the heart and soul of the department. About 70% of my time is dedicated, more like 75, to public works. And that is all in addition to the time spent by Robert Banshee, the deputy director. As you may all know, we take care of all things maintenance throughout the city, within our right of ways, on any public property whatsoever, buildings, grounds, and also occasionally, when referred to by code after a summons is ignored, or should I say, after a property owner is cited, to clean up their site or to board up an abandoned home, they have about 48 hours to do it themselves. After that, we receive a referral if nothing is done, and we go on there, we perform all of the work required to bring that property up to standard, and then we prepare a bill. And if the bill's not paid, it becomes a tax lien, and that goes on property. So not only do we maintain public property, but we also occasionally maintain private property as well. Division of Waste Management. This is an important one. It was originally set up with the intent that the waste generated from the sewer plant, as well as the, which is technically a liquid waste, as well as the solid waste, trash and recycling, would be managed as one bureau. We've come to realize that it's much easier to keep it as recycling and trash is a part of the public works, and all things sewer remain part of the sewer utility. It just works better that way, the way the staff is allocated at the plant. They are licensed and specifically know the products, the waste products that are generated from there, so we maintain it there. It's the most efficient way to go. We are consistently looking at ways of lowering the fees that we pay each year to get rid of sludge, trying to make our operations more efficient so that we're not shipping as much fluid out. Every pound of waste that goes out, we pay money. So the less goes out, the more we save. And that same goes for the solid waste. Every pound of recycling that we could pull out of trash saves us money, plus then we get paid when we actually sell that material, because recycling marketing, recycling materials provides us cash as well. If I may move on to some of the projects that we've completed in the last few years since I've been here. They're called projects, but essentially they're anything that required public procurement or a spec or a rant or anything like that. So 2012, we have the north boardwalk stabilization for Bamboozle that was prepared and completed within two weeks as an emergency, as an urgent project worth about $115,000. That's where we brought the cementitious material onto the boardwalk to make sure that Bamboozle was going to be actually going to happen and not have to cancel the event. We did the south boardwalk's substructure repairs prior to Sandy. We had spent about $65,000 in manpower and materials to actually stabilize the northernmost section of the south boardwalk that we just reconstructed. But sometimes people forget about that, but that was significant undertaking in and of itself. We did a, we've done two surplus property auctions. We put in lighting and curbing, which didn't exist before, in Fisherman's Lot. We put plans, we put specs together for the purchase of three dump trucks simultaneously just prior to Sandy. Those three trucks have proven invaluable in the last two winter seasons, and they're still going strong. So basically, for the price of one better used truck, we got three, and all are still performing. The West Side Community Center restrooms totaling $69,000. That doesn't include engineering time spent in preparing the plans and specs or Robert's time in managing the construction. We also did the major waterfront redevelopment area cleanup after Sandy and the beach restoration, multimillion dollar undertaking there, which happened in about a month and a half from start to finish. And then, of course, we have the south boardwalk reconstruction Phase 1A, which took care of First Avenue. That was worth about $200,000. We did the parking pay station replacements after Sandy, south boardwalk reconstruction Phase 2, community affairs facilities improvements for CDBG, traffic light materials were procured for both Sandy repairs. Springwood Avenue lights, we did that all in-house, reconstruction of the city's infrastructure, oversight of VIVE, Second Avenue Beach Playground, Springwood Avenue Playground, which has been in use for a year now. We procured and sought the reverse electrical energy auction contract with APG&E to the tune of $85,000 in annual savings. I procured a recycling marketable, recycling materials marketing contract, which is saving us and actually generating to the tune of three times more than what we were originally getting. Sodium hypochlorite for the plant, which is a standard one. The list of waste services we locked in for, I believe it's three additional years at the same price that we paid in 2013. And again, the recent boardwalk reconstruction, conversion of all of the waterfront redevelopment streetlights from metal halide to LED, which has been saving us an amount of money in electrical fees, and a new very efficient street sweeper for the DPW. We look forward to the award, we actually awarded a contract for professional services for Springwood Park. We look to break ground on that by mid-October and break ground, ribbon cut by May of next year. I have the Sunset Bridge project to do. That is the next hot button on my list, and I'll be attacking that as early as next week.
And a timeframe for that?
Timeframe for the...
Is that on my list?
Yeah, absolutely. Timeframe for that is RFP for just what you gave me approval to do, which was the geotechnical services, surveying and drafting. Robert and I will put together the details and the spec, put that out to bid. I anticipate a three-month construction window for that.
So when do you think you would put that out to bid? And air on the side, you know, give me an honest estimate on that, right?
Okay. RFP alone is going to take probably a month and a half before I can bring it to you for award. So we're looking at a second meeting at the earliest, probably the first meeting in September toward that contract. We can probably bid the construction in mid-November and have it completed by the later part of the spring next year. So...
All right, I'm going to...
Say late spring next year.
Okay.
And it's going to follow the same similar construction as the boardwalk, except we're not going to use the beefier steel and concrete piles, we're going to use the traditional timber. There's a few other projects that I have on the tab in addition to that. I have a road program, approximately half a million dollars in DOT grants, I'm going to be coming before you sometime in the very near future to seek additional money to tack on to that. It is my estimation that it will take for 10 straight years, approximately a million dollars a year to get our roads up to stuff, to where they need to. And that does not include anything subsurface-wise regarding sanitary sewer replacement or any major storm sewer replacement. So we're going to have to do the best we can to really, you know, really try to value engineer these jobs and try to get the best bang for our buck. We may not be able to reconstruct the entire roadway, but as long as we get a nice smooth riding surface, we may have to sacrifice some lifetime on the actual pavement to make that happen. We're going to be bidding some DPW equipment once our CFO approves the MCIA bonding. Library HVAC upgrades, which will be a CDBG project, the sewer plant retaining wall, which is a hot one there, the sewer plant roof, sewer plant degrider, and if we get the grant, which all signs are pointing to yes, for a million dollars from the EDA, all of the south boardwalk decorative lighting upgrades with the help of iStar. Those are the hottest projects, projects that are going to have to happen in the near future. There's a few others on the pie in the sky list, but we'll attack the others, the ones I just mentioned first, and we'll go from there. At this point, I'd like to feel any other, any questions from council.
Joe, what do you anticipate Springwood Avenue Park will be completely done?
Springwood Avenue Park, May of 2015.
May of 2015.
2015. I will say about Springwood Park, we just got the approval that we've been waiting for, for quite a while from the county. They now recognize the site as clean, which is a major, major milestone in that entire project. As part of the RFP, fixing our recreational open space inventory with the state, because it's been discombobulated for quite some years, that's part of the contract, so that's going to be happening as well. Vacating that property, there's a series of lots that need to be subdivided and joined with the vacated street to make one large site to be able to record it on the Rossi. All of that's going to be done as part of this contract as well. So these are all some major milestones that originally were looking like big time stealers on the schedule, but are no longer as much a concern as they were then. Yes, absolutely. We can go right off of that now.
Oh, I got two quick questions.
Okay.
And I'll make my quick and interesting one. So what, two things that I would love to have is a comprehensive snowplow plan.
Okay.
What happens every winter is like, right? What happens every winter is what happens every winter. So this winter, I would love for that not to happen and have, you know, a real idea of where you're starting, where you're going, what, you know, what your, what the entire plan is for snowplowing.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, and you touched on it, but a comprehensive plan on, on the potholing and, and the streets. So, you know, is there a plan to start on as, well, as very often we would be familiar with the county, but is there a plan to start, however you're going to, and I understand it's a million dollar project, but however you're going to start to get these streets into some sort of working order? If you could just, you know, just give me, and you can bullet it, just a comprehensive plan on where you're going to start and how you're going to finish.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so the other item on the agenda that I am going to present is, if you all recall, or hopefully you recall, for VIVE, when they came before the council for approval, the bump outs were a highly contested issue. Long story short, in the long run, the, or in the end, the bump outs were approved for VIVE. There was discussion as to what if they don't work out, or iStar guarantee that they would rip them out, and so on and so forth. I'd like to bring that forward, now that iStar has legitimately come forth with a plan for, that was Phase 1, they're working on Phase 2, but Phase 3 and 3A, which is going to, it's going to include a lot of the future bump outs along Kingsley Avenue, similar to the VIVE at Asbury First, but it's also going to incorporate 4th, 5th, and I believe there's one other. So I figured now is the good time, as any, to bring that forward for further discussion as to whether we're going to expand that plan in a waterfront redevelopment area. And I have a couple of posters on it, that point to the exact areas, and then maybe we can just begin our discussion on that. Okay, so I know council pretty much sees this. I'll look to get out the words, because I have to say what I'm about, but... The area is shaded in blue. It's your face gray area that I was just referring to. Green is future, so for now, we won't even work in green. Yellow is completed, so we won't look at that either. The red area is what they're working on now, and the purple area is the two intersections at Asbury and First Avenue and Kingsley, where we currently have bump outs. The objective that iStar is looking for is an overall sentiment from the city as to whether the VIVE bump outs were successful or not. I'm going to speak to the engineering and DPW aspects, provide you with all the facts that I know of, also our experiences through this past winter and whatnot with planning, certain maintenance issues, and then do that, so that you have all the information in those aspects. If you decide otherwise, they should expand the bump outs. From an engineering standpoint, it's largely a pro versus con. There's no question that traffic calming, maybe not the case of Al or Trump, but typical studies show the bump outs traffic calming is achieved with great success when intersections are bottlenecked, if you will, by the bump outs. So pedestrian... So pedestrian safety goes up. Sinish viewing goes up right now in the waterfront. Along Ocean Avenue, I personally noticed, many people don't realize that the two different lanes of travel in the 100 block between Ocean Avenue and Kingsley are one way. So many a time, I've seen people go up one way down there. And I believe it's mainly attributed to the fact that the signs sit way off on the side by the sidewalk. With the bump out, those signs are brought right up to the street where they actually are. As far as open space, I think I-STAR is estimating that this will give, it's hard to believe, but deeper in the third, so we'll go with this. CAFRA on the NJBD level loves to hear stuff like that for grounding or recharge. They don't like projects that put a lot of incompatible type pavements out there so that they're caused a little rough and instant flash flying type situations. So for that, it's good. Walking dogs, there's not a lot of area to walk dogs, those are ideal for that. So like I said, engineering wise, largely pro. Putting the DPW hat on, we hate the bump outs. They are a nightmare for maintenance and just about every way. The thought of inheriting those works of art as far as the peat gravel and the plantings and the rocks and the mowing actually makes me nauseous and a little, I don't ever want to do that, ever. That being said, clouding has not been an issue yet, but that's not to say that it won't be in the future once we start banning a lot more cars parking in that area. We've been very careful with last season not to get the curves, be very careful to not cloud into the park areas. But ideally, if you think about it, if you know you're going to have a lot of people parking there, we're going to want clouded park lanes. Number one, so we can, I shouldn't say, so we can number one enforce parking so people can see the number. Number one, so people can park here. The bump outs are good for storage of snow, but from a DPW standpoint, that's about the only problem that I can say. Long story short, from a DPW engineer's standpoint, cons outweigh pros in that the maintenance is such a nightmare. Unless there was a way that it could be perpetually guaranteed that we wouldn't have to maintain those to the level that they were designed at. I'm going to stick with, I'm going to say largely no as far as bump outs when it comes to that. I have not spoken to police and fire, but I believe they have their own sentiment on that. Again, if there was a way that we can guarantee that maintenance wise, things could be done differently perpetually, that would change my, that could potentially change my thought on these bump outs.
Hasn't I-STAR involved, you know, they said they were involved?
As a matter of fact, just so everyone's clear, right now, I-STAR is completely maintaining all of our meetings in the 100 blocks as well as the meetings and all of landscaping in and around the VIVE. If that were to continue like that, I mean, talk a different story if I could get a guarantee that that was going to happen. But as of right now, I don't, I can't even imagine trying to keep up with those. We wouldn't be able to adjust this. And I know it sounds like we're selling ourselves short here, but the peat gravel literally has to be swept both the side walls and over. We did it in Preston Park and that's strictly DPW. As small as that is with no brass, no plantings, it's a nightmare there's peat gravel everywhere. We tried to do that to try to accommodate the boardwalkers and worked through that and we're not so concerned.
So Joe obviously has clearly made it a public works difficulty or difficult situation. However, speaking with, with I-STAR, they are amenable to writing all the bump outs in their homeowners agreements. So the city would not be required to maintain the bump outs. That, that is the proposal that I-STAR has offered to the city. They believe it would be best for the city to proceed with the bump outs similar to what I-STAR has. Again, there's going to be nearly an acre and a half of, of open space. You have the benefits of the, the traffic calming and a better traffic signage. So if the city was not required to maintain the bump outs in the open space at all, I see a positive for the city. Everybody could have their own opinion. However, I think the bump outs do add a aesthetic benefit to that entire area and absent the, the maintenance or the homeowners and the homeowner association required to maintain it, that obligation to the city then goes away.
Aesthetically, I think it would be hard for us to find anyone to say that they disprove the aesthetics of that.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
I see the actual aerial of the-
Yeah, John, I'm sorry, yeah.
I was just going to put this forward just so I can say in case you haven't noticed, but it's hard not to notice when you drive in that area. This is essentially what we have in that area and you will see identically what we have here continuing further on. Second, third, fourth and fifth for the time being. But essentially, if that's done, this will extend all the way up the waterfront. In the next phase, I'm going to talk in second, third, fourth and fifth.
Joe, how much green rate are we losing?
We're not losing anywhere gaining, or gaining green rate. I believe it was a third of an acre just for VIVE. And I, I thought it was an acre and a third, but it could be an acre and a half for this specific phase three. We've also looked at potential loss of parking. And although there is some in some areas depending on the layout, for the most part due to the statutory 25 foot from the corner. Here's, this is a bad example, let's take this, obviously we're losing a spot here, but due to the statutory 25 feet from the corner, no parking, that area didn't lose no parking. It's a lot of them. More like in there. We're not voting on this, correct?
We're not voting on it tonight, councilman. They are, I-STAR is out pricing, they'd like to award something in August.
Okay.
Can we get something from police and fire just to put my memo on? I mean, I already said it's fire.
And as far as like when you say maintain, you're just talking about cutting the grass, I'll go cut the grass. I'm talking about, are you saying when the snowplow breaks up the curve, are they going to fix the curve or is that going to be on the city?
That's a good, it's a good point. We did not discuss that at length, but we could most likely add that to, to the conversation.
Okay, Joe, point to the bottom, first and Kingsley. First and Kingsley, come, come down first, get it right in there. Where that bump at is, if you're going east on Kingsley, go on first. East on first, pass the white car and it narrows down to that little tiny hollow back.
With the, with the inlay there?
With the street itself.
I got you right.
Right there, right there. The street narrows down to that. If a bicycle fell, not a car, and a fire truck was behind it, they would have to back up to try to get down another street. Now, it just went first avenue. And it was a, it was a, a try, let's try this, see if it works. When we do that, the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, how are fire and police going to get, what, what is he at problem back? And that's something that, we're not voting tonight, this is a question I'm going to ask fire and police. I've talked to fire and police, I haven't talked to the chiefs, I've talked to the officers, as far as traffic officers and everything. And it's all off the record, but they think it's stupid, they think it's like, it's a problem. It's a, it's a tragedy weight to happen. One block isn't going to kill us, Asbury Avenue because now it was made wider, the bump outs aren't that bad. But look at First Avenue coming into Kingsley. Well, a bicycle falls over, you, you can't get by. A car breaks down in a snowstorm, you can't pop. Whereas if it was a two lane or two width, yes, you can go around. And to do that for the entire beachfront, you know, one block may not kill us because the fire department is smart, they've been here forever, they know. Well, jeez, we could cut down Bourbon, we could cut down Heck and we'd go second, we'd go third and do this. But if you do it for the entire beachfront, we would be in deep trouble. And again, we're not voting tonight, we need more information.
And maybe just a quick memo from police and fire with the proposal and that's it.
It was a, to start the discussion. And, you know, Joe was going to share.
But I would like to know what other communities do, and I mean, obviously other communities have these bump outs and they seem to be working well. They look great, it adds green area, let's see what other, you know, hey, look, we're obviously not the only ones doing it. Have you heard from any other towns that any of these are terrible?
Where are they?
I mean, Bradley Beach has circles in the middle of some of their roads and somehow their plows seem to get around them and the fire trucks seem to be able to do it. I don't think they're smarter than, than we are.
No, but when we said we're adding 1.4 acres of green space, it's not like, wow, we're on a baseball field. We're adding 20 feet here, 20 feet there, it's not enough to have a catchall. So I mean, it's just enough to like, for somebody to go down, push law lower and cut and maintain. And the thing with I-STAR, you had the initial conversation with them and they said they all cut the grass, but will they maintain all the broken curves and all the signs and everything like that? Right.
And for how long? For the next 200 years or their contract?
I like this fancy word, it's forever.
John knows I'm telling the council.
Every time.
I voted against it, we're the ones, I like the Bradley plan. Plan is wide front, uh, streets. Kind of like that design, I'd stay with that design, but.
The sideline still stays the same guys, it's not changing.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, the reason why I brought it up, they're going to need to know pretty soon, so I wanted to start the discussion now. Thank you. They've also requested the opportunity to discuss as well.
As a city council?
Couple of quick questions, Jack, any update on the broken cameras?
I have not got an update from the, from the chief. I know he has had the little salt wireless in the city. And as you know, we are meeting next week and he is to have that report at that meeting when we meet with the prosecutor of Neptune and Sheriff's Office.
Waterfront amendments, I thought I heard many times we could get that July 1st and we could start the process. We passed July 1st and you haven't got any-
I was going to make those, I was going to make those comments tonight. Don Sammet just received it and he is recommending to make a presentation at the executive session at the next meeting and subsequently follow up with a public meeting on July 30th.
Don't we all agree we're going to have a special council meeting amongst ourselves? Because we got in the executive session because it's all what happened tonight, the executive session. We've got hell of a- Well, no, we have a special meeting just with council and it's perfectly-
Will you plan out that meeting tonight and Dom, will you be able to forward the plan to council tomorrow?
Yeah, we have that, yes.
One, one day or two is it, Joe, at this point? If you're saying-
Well, what I could, what I have from, what I have from I-STAR, I have I-STAR's, you know, we've not looked at it yet, we just got it. So I mean, I could forward it to you, but it won't have the ability of my review or our legal team's review of their latest copy.
How many other jobs that they have? How different, is it, I, I, there's been a couple of drafts.
There has been.
So the last one that you gave, is drafts are different?
Well, I don't know because I haven't seen it yet, I know the changes relate to parking and traffic.
So would you like to see it right now, it's unvarnished view as far as-
I'd like to see it as soon as possible, but one thing that I said before we really cracked you up is like, July, what, one, two? Two, we've been up here for over a year and none of us has asked, have been asked to go to committing, none of us has asked to be, and to put in any input into this amendment. None of us has seen it for over a year, it's been worked on for four years and then all of a sudden now, I-STAR gives another supplement at the last second to delay it again, so I mean, I've asked this question many times, who's holding this up? Is it the city or is it I-STAR and I can't get an answer, so I still can't get an answer.
Well, I, since I-STAR just delivered it on July 1st, I would recommend a distributed. If you could distribute that to city council, knowing that it does not have your or our attorney's comments and let's schedule meeting prior to executive session at, at the four next meetings, 7:16. And that will just force us all to look at it and look at it sooner or later.
Any update with the state parking garage, since I pointed out to the city in February that it expired in 2012. We've been trying to get a new contract, but meanwhile, we're giving free parking. We want to put in a pay park in there. Do we still have a state monitor, can he help us speed this process up because this has been since February, so?
We, we have followed up with both state agencies. One state agency just released it to the second state agency. We believe we will have it by the next meeting.
Okay, and it did expire in 2012?
It, it did expire in 2012 and the city should have followed up prior to the expiration of that 2012.
One thing, and this is something I've been probably addressing more in-house between council members and administration, and it's something I strongly believe in. I think for us to be a more efficient council, a better council, we need a real workshop meeting. And by I say a real workshop meeting, that's not a half hour before the meeting and we vote on something, you know, with the heck of a word we go on. That's either like the Wednesday before the meeting, we have a workshop meeting, or the Monday before the meeting, scheduled meeting, we have a workshop meeting, which would be information, the departments would come and explain, here's what's going to happen. And we would have time to filter it, listen to it, the public would attend, and we'd have time to ask questions and even the Monday before. It gives me 48 hours to go and ask questions, gives the public 48 hours to get in touch with me and say, and you want to know something, this is a bad idea because of X, Y, and Z. Because right now, I think we're voting on things we don't even know we're voting on because of given choice. We've got five handouts tonight that we're going to vote on at the last second. So my opinion, looking for response from anybody else, I think to do justice to this town, we have to meet for them twice a month. And I wish everybody safe and happy 4th of July.
Just hope to see everyone at the fireworks, I'm hoping for no rain, I know you know rain dance. Hope to have a pop crowd and the businesses do well and see you there.
Question, dumpsters that are put around town, thank you for taking care of the dumpster on the ocean front before they look. When a person gets permission to put a dumpster in, somebody's got it in place on the west side or something, how long is this allowed to stay there? Especially if no more activity is going on? Do you have somebody that goes around and checks us and just says, you know, this is going to be here a month, it's time to get it out of there?
I don't know the answer to that, councilman, but I will check our code and I will email council tomorrow.
That's it, I mean, other than, you know, I mean, you don't want to know about the civil war anymore. You don't have three meetings a week here, John, you don't learn it no matter what, that's okay. Uh, yeah, what happened, what happened today, 1864 Johnson withdrew his troops from the, from the hills of Virginia. Caffed, withdrew and threw their troops because they were doing so bad, they had nowhere else, guys needed the troops. He couldn't protect the hills anymore, that's okay.
So just a quick, Jack, I asked that the pilots, you want the other pilots to make sure, is there any update on that?
We are waiting for, considering it will be released shortly, our auditor's report who has looked at each one of them much more closely than what was reviewed previously and based on his audit, will then decide on how best to proceed.
And what would the time be on that?
Well, I would, if, if he identifies that there are- Well, I would, if he identifies that there are problems with certain aspects of the current pilots, I would move immediately to look for possibly an independent firm to come in, based on his audit numbers. But he has, he is looking at each one of them as in the past, it was an audit and everyone wasn't reviewed, considering we've identified that what we believe some of the problems are in the past, and he has spent additional time looking at each one of the audits. And the audit should be released possibly by the next meeting, but I would anticipate sometime in August.
And I also have waterfront redevelopment, and then I'm sent grants all the time for projects in town, and people send me grants about the fountain, and some is at Lake. So I don't know how our applying for grant process works, or if we have a process, and if we don't have a process, can we get a process? And I know other towns hire, hire companies to write a certain number of grants a month, whether it's, I know, I spoke to somebody in Atlantic Highlands, they have a company that writes four grants a month for projects that need to be moved forward, so maybe when I can kind of figure out, because I feel, to quote Pam, I feel like it goes into the black call, right? Whenever I forward the grants to department heads, I don't, I'm not sure they're being, and I'm not saying anything bad about the department heads, I'm just saying just a better grant applying process I would love. And then, I don't have a problem with the workshop meeting, I mean, you and I meet once a week, so I want to reserve the right to go absolutely if I can, but I'm fine with meeting with Jack once a week, you going over the council package. I'm not opposed to it, I just, I have a full-time gig, so I've got to, I've got to keep that in mind. Go ahead.
One of the things I want to mention, is I look around the room, and I hope there will be people looking on board, but there is a senior Olympics game in September. They have everything from bocce ball to swimming to golfing, must be about nine of 10 different activities, and it's based on age category, anywhere from 50 to 90 years of age. So next week, there will be.
Yeah, 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 I'm not saying.
There should be a whole lot of people to sign up. And so there will be information available, I'll be coordinating it, and I hope all of you that might be interested in some type of physical activity will sign up. You know, if a form showing your interest will be available from the city. Jack, I want to ask one question, I know we've gone back and forth with this, but the Shade Tree Commission, there were two towns that were open, and I believe councilwoman Quinn stepped down, but there's a woman Elaine Austin, because there were only three candidates. And so, and when I keep talking to her, she's telling me that she was never notified, so my question is, was she appointed, or was she not appointed?
The, would ask Melody, those items aren't listed, and we should list them. I'm embarrassed, I don't remember the woman's name that I interviewed.
Pollitt?
Pollitt.
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 She runs the, the most recent to the Shade Tree, she runs the community garden there?
Yeah.
Well, Pollitt, and I call her Pollitt, so I'm not exactly.
Pollitt, yeah, there is, there is an individual who forwarded an application, was interested, longtime resident, woman of color. She has spent a lot of time donating her time, and I appointed her as an alternate.
Okay, I can have my own.
I gave that in writing to the clerk to copy all the council.
Okay, I would like a copy of that, and my only concern is, I know this Elaine Austin submitted a letter of interest to be on the Shade Tree Commission, and she was never called for an interview, and that's not right. Whether she got the position or not, that's one thing, but to submit a letter of interest, and to my knowledge, there were two people that wanted to be reappointed. So based on what I'm hearing right now, there was a third person, that I know this fourth person was never interviewed, and I received their application quite some time ago.
Well, I could say that, Mayor, there are many people who submitted applications wanting to serve on various boards, and they are all not called, you know, all not interviewed.
Criteria that we just mentioned, for the lady that you said you appointed also applies to, as far as this Elaine Austin. And so if you're going to put out there that there are positions that need to be filled, then you either need to have some type of criteria to say this is a method by which we are going to eliminate some of the people that have applied. And if we're not going to do that, then we need to interview all of them.
You can, if you ever want to, it's a reward in the city.
John, I understand that, but we went through a process, we went through a process when we hired Mr. Kelly. There, to my knowledge, there were only four people. Now, somebody tell me if I'm wrong, based on what Amy you just said, there were two people that wanted to be reappointed, I know this Elaine Austin, and then the person you just mentioned.
Well, I wouldn't say that there were only two people. Many people who fill out an application who want to serve, they usually indicate that they would be happy to serve on any board. And I think we have stacks of those types of applications, where people indicate they, you know, they love the city, they want to serve on a board, and they would be happy to serve on any, any board. This individual has donated a lot of time in the.
She, and I can say, Jack, she runs the community garden that you're, if you literally turn your head, she's been running that community garden for years, since we've had it.
And we, I'm not going to go over this in public, but the three of us could sit down, and I can go over all the things this Elaine Austin has done also, but I had to bring it up, because I keep asking, have you heard, have you heard, and she tells me no.
And I don't have any problem putting together a process on which the way we interview people for boards, that is objective across the board, not just for the Shade Tree, right? For every board. That may be something that I have no problem having a conversation, but to interview everybody, if we're interviewing people for the Shade Tree, we're not interviewing people for planning board, that seems a bit odd to me. But, you know, it is what it is. And just to clarify, and I, and I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure, but I am still on the Shade Tree Commission, you know, I still serve it.
Unless you resign.
I did not resign. It's a hot commission.
We used to not be able to get anybody to be on it.
But a process on which we appoint people to boards, I have absolutely no problem having a conversation about that, so.
The other item I believe, Mr. Kelly, you're just going to go over a hot item that's been brought up the last couple of council meetings, a little bit later on, is the city's policy doing background check. And then the last thing I have to say is, our code enforcement department is greatly in need of manpower for it. That's all I have.
Okay. Regarding the other background checks, and I'll talk about quickly, the code enforcement unit, I agree, the city had, has advertised for a director of code enforcement property improvement, which would also be an assistant prosecutor to be able to prosecute the cases that the office has. That advertisement period ended last week, there were approximately 15 attorneys that applied for the position, and we will coordinate a personnel committee meeting, I'll distribute those resumes, and hopefully we'll have someone hired, or at least make a job offer to prior to August 1. The city is conducting background checks on all its employees, using the individual that our recreation department has used in the past, which is a retired FBI employee. In addition to doing a standard criminal background check, we're also doing financial background checks.
Thank you.
Counselor, city attorney?
Yes, just one matter, I would like to let the public know that the council is not going to be taking formal action this evening on any of the matters that were addressed earlier during our executive session. And that's it.
Motion, attorney?
Move it close.
Is that hold, hold it, city manager, do you have something else to add to?
No, well, actually, the one item, I would like to set up a meeting prior to the July 16th meeting, and we can have a closed session to discuss the waterfront redevelopment. We didn't decide on what night we'd like to have that closed executive session.
Before the July 16th meeting?
Correct.
And that is due to the fact that this relates to a contract negotiation, which is required, anytime there's waterfront amendments to the waterfront redevelopment plan, there is a negotiation that must be undertaken between the city and the waterfront developer. So it is proper for the council to engage in a private discussion without the waterfront redevelopment project during that discussion about the negotiation. And then my understanding is you're going to then subsequently have a full public presentation with regard to the proposed plan amendments. And as you know, in order to effectuate plan amendments and ordinance is necessary, so there would need to be action to introduce an ordinance at one meeting, referral to the planning board, and then adoption, and a public hearing at future council meetings.
And we have to advertise, we would have to advertise this meeting.
For the executive session.
Absolutely, it would have to be noticed in accordance with the Urban Public Meetings Act. Just notice.
Okay, that's fine. How about, next question?
Can I suggest that we all get back to Mr. Kelly tomorrow, after we can have a chance to look at our calendars?
That would be fine. Don, you available next week?
Yeah, I mean, I prefer to have just a couple days to review what the latest stock is, so, uh, mid- to late, Wednesday or Thursday, we can perhaps, we might, fight her.
Kevin, you want on Wednesday?
Wednesday's Monday.
Wednesday and Monday?
Yeah. I took those one night.
Hey, Jerry. The only other free day I got is Monday, seven, seven of the days.
So why don't we do what Mike said, and just email.
All right.
Very good, so consensus at the end of the day tomorrow, we'll forward an email out, Melody approved.
All right.
Motion, attorney?
All right. All members, please?
Five minutes.